So that's was very encouraging to see and I just encourage all of our students to continue to give it their all. I have several things to share for about our seniors, a very busy time coming up for them, lots of things happening. So first off, this Friday, the seniors, we will be participating in interviews with area businesses. This is part of their senior seminar class with Mrs. Van Horn, and it allows them to continue to practice their interview skills, but then also is a chance for them to apply for local jobs here in Hicksville if they are currently seeking employment. Last year, we did have a couple of students actually get job offers from a couple of the businesses that showed up. So we have thirteen businesses coming to participate on Friday, and many of them do have current positions open to fill. So we're excited for that, and I want to thank Mrs. Wyman and Mrs. Van Horn for working to facilitate that event and also to all the area businesses for coming in and helping to make that happen for our students. Then on May first, the senior class is going to be venturing out into the community for a Senior Community Service Day. This has been a project of our counselor, Mrs. Wyman, as well, and very excited to have this opportunity for the students to get out together as a class one last time, give back to their community. So Mrs. Wyman has been working with the village, and they're going to be painting different things, beautifying different parts of downtown, and then the park as well. Then on May eighth, the senior class will be presenting their senior projects to different judges that have volunteered their time to come in here to the school. So I want to thank all the area residents, business leaders who have volunteered to come in, take time out of their day to help us with that very important piece of senior year for students here at Hicksville. Then later on that evening, we'll be holding our senior awards ceremony in the Commons at six P.M. This event is by invitation, so if there's any seniors receiving awards, they will be notified via letter. And the seniors' last day here at HHS is Friday, May seventeenth. That day, we will host the annual senior cookout, which we invite all our four-county students back for. All seniors, one last dinner together, one last lunch together, and then we have the walk-through, their last walk-through of the halls before they leave that day. In the high school, we're holding a testing incentive day, is what we're calling it, for all high school students on Friday, May third. We wanted to reward all the hard work that all of our high school students have put in for state tests this year, whether that be the ACT test that the juniors took, or Algebra I for freshmen, all the tests that the sophomores take. So all students are invited to that. It's a fun afternoon out in the fieldhouse. Students will be excused from class after lunch through the end of the day to enjoy various activities and really just have fun. And my last event to share is the 2024 Junior/Senior Prom. That's going to be held on Saturday, May fourth. This year's theme is Las Vegas, and we will once again be opening up the school for the community to preview all of the decorations. So I don't know, we didn't do it last year, I don't know how long it's been, but they wanted to do that, and that is going to be open for a community walk-through from four-thirty to five-thirty P.M. on May fourth. And then the traditional student walk-in at the main event entrance will begin at six P.M. this year. And prom itself kicks off at seven, goes until ten, and then the post-prom is here at the school this year. I know they have a lot of exciting things planned for the students here within the building, and that begins promptly at eleven P.M. That's all I got.
Thank you.
One thing real quick, I'll help you cook.
Awesome.
On five seventeen, so just count me in for that.
Appreciate that. Last year, I'm surprised I didn't scare you off after all the greasy burgers. Thank you.
All right, yeah. In the middle school, I just want to echo what Mr. Highlander said about state testing. Our students are working really, really hard. It's been really encouraging to see them work. We finished up ELA last week, grades five through eight. We're starting math testing this week, grades five through eight, and then next week, our science kicks off, and that's just for grades five and eight. So a lot of testing in the middle school. I want to thank all of our proctors and our readers, they put in a lot of time. I want to thank our teachers just for being really flexible during this testing season. There's a lot of moving pieces, and it takes everyone to really make sure that it's organized and efficient. So I just want to say a big thank you to everyone with state testing, and let's stay focused and keep doing well these next couple of weeks. And then finally, like, I have some exciting events going on in the middle school in May. We really wanted to focus in on our incentive. The Hicksville initiative is obviously what we feel sets us apart here at Hicksville and our Hicksville Essentials, and we wanted to do something in each grade level that really focused on the incentives. So our fifth graders are going to be participating in an etiquette dinner on May seventh. Students are going to go to Saint John Lutheran Church, where a meal is going to be prepared for them. Teachers will have worked on table manners, etiquette, discussion skills, and other essentials that students will display on this day and go through at the church. So we're real excited to watch our fifth graders prepare and take part in this event. Our sixth graders are going to compete in the annual Hicksville Shake on May ninth and tenth. This is a competition that really exemplifies our Hicksville Essentials. Our students will participate in a variety of competitions that emphasizes teaching manners, discipline, respect, collaboration, and professional conduct. We're really eager this year to watch our sixth graders prepare and participate in this event, and we're excited to see who's crowned this year's champion of the shake. We're really excited about that. Our seventh graders are doing something new this year. They're going to participate in a Shark Tank competition on May sixteenth and seventeenth. Seventh graders are going to be divided up into small teams where they're going to invent a product, work on marketing and advertising for that product, work on the financials of the product, and then they're kind of, they're going to present this product and information to a group of judges. Our seventh graders are going to use many of the Hicksville Essentials when working together and presenting to the judges, and we're excited to see the group of students that win with their product of this year's Shark Tank. And then our eighth graders are going to be going on the annual Washington, D.C. trip on May fifteenth through the seventeenth. This is a great trip for our eighth graders to further learn about American history and government, as well as view some of the iconic sights, obviously, of our country. So it's a great time for our students to practice these essentials and kind of go show off and represent our school in a positive manner here outside of Hicksville. So our teachers do a really good job all year of implementing our essentials and really working with our kiddos, and we're excited to go through this dinner and these competitions and this trip, so our students can kind of show these essentials off a little bit. So that's it on the middle school end of things.
Well, in the elementary, our third and fourth grade students will be taking their math O.S.T.s next week. We have a kindergarten music program coming up on May second at six o'clock. This will just be for kindergarten students, not readiness students, and more information will follow as that date approaches. Next Friday, we'll be having our last principal math club dance party. So far, we have a hundred and ninety-six students who have met that expectation of completing fifteen math facts in thirty seconds. Some of the K-12 house events that are coming up district-wide, this is crunch time for our friendly house competitions. Currently, Exemplar is in first place with Karaji close behind, but this is the time where points can drastically change. For example, last week, elementary students had an opportunity to color a coloring page of their, of their house to get awarded five points. This week, as we're speaking, we probably have kiddos running around Hicksville trying to find the thirty-six hidden rocks to bring in tomorrow. Our K-12 Spring Shenanigans House Assembly will kick off April twenty-ninth. At this assembly, students compete in a variety of activities for house points. This assembly is also the kickoff for the House Pride Week, which is kind of like a big spirit week, which, again, kiddos are awarded tons of points for participating, so points can drastically change. And the winning house announcement will be on May seventh, with the house celebration on May fourteenth. A huge shout-out to our house leaders, Chris Gagin, Joy Geiger, Emily Fenzer, and Joey Stevenson, for all of the time, the creativity, the hard work behind the scenes, just making this a great initiative for our school. They do an amazing job. Also, the district art show is May tenth. Again, Mr. Joey Stevenson and Mr. Chris Gagin are hard at work getting, you know, artwork from every student that will be displayed down the main event hallway in the Commons. It's always a very well-attended event, and this will take place, like I said, on May tenth from four-thirty to seven o'clock. And lastly, tis the season of class field trips, the Elementary Fund in the Sun, which is May eighth, the third and fourth grade testing incentive, which is a yes-day. That day is planned, but it is a surprise to the kiddos, and that will be for our third and fourth grade students. We've got the fourth grade Mega Mall coming up, Froggy Park visit, so it's a very, very busy month as soon as May first hits. Just a reminder that school fees need to be paid for students to go on to the field trips, so that's just my friendly reminder.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Okay, I just have something really quick. I'll make it short, sweet, because it's going to echo what everybody said. Testing season is upon us. The special education department's in charge of making sure all the students receive their accommodations, as stated, on their IEPs, and that has been done, and, you know, we're very, very detailed when it comes to state testing there. As we go into the math portion of the state test, I am sure that's going to be another smooth process. The ELA has been going great. We're just about done, couple of students absent, that's all we have left. A big shout-out goes to the intervention staff and anybody proctoring our tests right now. It's, it's pretty tedious. I'm sure the phrase "going cross-eyed" is used every day when you read those tests and have to look at that screen as a, as a proctor, but I haven't heard one complaint, and I just am so grateful for everybody that takes the time to come in and do that for us and for the staff that does that here at our school. On top of state testing, this is IEP season, so the intervention specialists are also busy completing, creating, scheduling, IEP meetings, and holding those. So it is hard on them, and I know it's stressful, but again, I've heard no complaints, and I'm, and I'm very proud of the staff we have here. And then as we get going into the next month, we'll be solidifying our case, our caseloads, I'm sorry, our IEP caseloads to each staff member, so we'll be able to kind of be dispersing those out after we look at how many students are in each grade.
Thank you. Thank you all for your hard work. This is a fun time of the year when it's kind of the game of, let's cram everything we can into the last month and a half of school. Yes. Okay. We need a four-county report, Eric?
Yep. So last month, we talked about how Rick Hoopie was retiring as a director of our four-county. So the school did hire Ryan Wild, who is currently the principal at Full Land Schools. He's going to take over that position come June, and the school's just busy planning the new welding expansion project, or welding and electrical expansion project.
Good. Thank you. Keith?
Yep. We've attended a few job fairs this spring, and it's something we've never done before, and it's been a good thing. It's been a great way for us to get our name out there and a great way for us to take a look at some potential employees if, if and when there are openings, so it was, it was good. During spring break, Eric and his team completed a lot of different tasks in the building. I know that they were without heat for a few days. Did you survive?
Yeah. I brought my own heater in.
As they were working on the geothermal, repairing that. And then I'm meeting with John Kahler, or I met with John Kahler last week, our Neola representative, and so I'll be getting some board policies to you to review for next month's meeting. And lastly, I drove the bus today because we have no subs. So if you see me driving, there's no one else. That's it.
That's quick and easy. All right. So we're going to move on to minutes and financials. I'll need a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second. Thank you, Galen and Jen. All right. So the minutes from the regular board meeting on March eighteen, twenty-twenty-four, the Treasurers Consent Agenda Items, Cash Reconciliation as of March thirty-first, excuse me, twenty-twenty-four, Financial Statements for March twenty-twenty-four, Approve Amended Official Certificate of Estimated Resources for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four as Presented, Total Grand Fund Resources of sixteen million, seven hundred and one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and Total Resources for All Funds of twenty-one million, six hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars, fifty-three cents. To approve fiscal year twenty-twenty-four permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of fourteen million, five hundred and twenty-three dollars, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and five dollars, forty-seven cents, and total appropriations for all funds of seventeen million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. We have several donations to acknowledge and accept. One hundred dollars from Collins and Guilford Wealth Advisors for track, one hundred dollars from Cheryl Sam Murphy for track, a hundred dollars from Jennifer Ankeny for track, a hundred dollars from the Hicksville Bank for track, three hundred and fifteen dollars from BSN Sports for track, two hundred dollars from the Jim Schmidt Family Dealerships for track. I think a lot of that might have to do with their fundraiser, I think. Five hundred dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for Special Olympics Civil Service, twenty-two T-shirts from Amanda Lee Coffee for the Science Club. All right. Discussion and commentary over there. You got anything for us, Mike?
I don't have anything necessary to add, but if you've got questions.
Any discussion? All righty then. Okay. And again, always thanks to the community for always being so generous.
Absolutely.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. Moving on. Again, I need a motion?
I'll move.
Eric?
I'll second.
And Galen, thank you. To recommend a transfer of the remaining cash balance of three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seventy cents from the Mini Aces Football Fund, which ends in nine-five-six-eight, to the Aces Football Fund, which ends in nine-five-five-eight. Discussion?
This is at, per the request of the football coach, Mr. Davis, so here it is.
All right. Are they changing something to do with Mini Aces, or that it's just?
No, he just decided that he would like to see both funds together, and he'll manage it instead of having to operate two, so.
All right. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. Moving on to the employment of certified staff. I'll move. Thank you. Thank you, Jen and Eric. Recommend to approve Madison Sterheim as a certified substitute for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Recommend to approve the resignation from Erin Montgomery as elementary guidance counselor at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Recommend to approve the recognition from Josh Fries as head girls' basketball coach. Recommend the following teachers be issued a continuing contract, Kate Hagerty and Ryan Meiser. Recommend the following teachers to be issued a three-year limited contract, Jamie Altman, Brianna Kohler, and A.J. Klausing. Recommend the following teachers be issued a two-year limited contract, Paula Frye and Kristen Wendell. Excuse me. Recommend the following teachers be issued a one-year limited contract, Allison Stury and Madison Stockman. Recommend issuing a continuing contract to Shannon Bolser as school nurse. Discussion?
Do we have the nurse set up on a scale, like we have our other nurse?
As far as pay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else? Well, congratulations to those getting continuing contracts. That's kind of a big deal in the education world, so that's cool. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. I need a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Galen and Tyler. Recommend issuing a two-year limited contract to Kayla Vedder. Discussion? No. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. A motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler and Jen. Recommend to partially reduce and enforce a teaching contract for Melissa Liddell, who serves as a Spanish teacher in the district. The teaching position will be reduced to a part-time position, and the teacher will work approximately three-point-seven-five hours per day. The reduction in force will take effect at the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Discussion?
What bearing will this have on the trip to Spain?
I have spoken with the supervisor from that company, and it won't have an effect on that.
I'll second.
So roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. Okay, we do have an addendum to the employment of certified staff. And so I need a motion for that. Jen?
I'll second.
And Eric is seconding. To recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Brooklyn Graber as classroom instructor with zero years' experience at a bachelor's degree for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year pending certification. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Michael Myers as classroom instructor with zero years' experience at a bachelor's degree in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year pending certification. Always nice to get graduates back to do a job in, in the community. It's, it's really kind of cool.
Class, where will they be?
Brooklyn will be third grade, and Michael will be intervention specialist for middle school, high school.
Then we will move on to, oh, yeah, sorry. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. And moving on to employment of classified staff, which we also have some addendums, but we'll get to this part first. I need a motion.
I'll move.
All right, I'll take Galen first, and then Eric. All right. Page before. All right. Anyway. Recommend to approve as classified substitutes for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Madison Sterheim and Cecilia Waters. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Maddy Sterheim Track. Recommend issuing a continuing contract to the following classified staff, Becky Bailey and Christina Tadson. This is a change to the agenda. We are crossing off Jake Bradbury's name, so we only have Jenna Gurkin for recommending the two-year limited contract. And recommending issuing a two-year limited contract to Mary Glass as bus driver, beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and concluding at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then we are recommending issuing supplemental contracts to the following at minimum wage of ten forty-five per hour for summer technology assistance in twenty-twenty-four. That would be Noah Schaefer and Merle Yunes. And that would be, discussion? Anyone?
So then, the tech help then will be just paid per timesheet. So historically, they were paid a set rate, but I think it was time to make a change to make sure we're in compliance, so.
Okay. Thanks for explaining the change. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. Continuing on, I need a motion.
Are we doing, oops, the addendum?
Well, the addendum we'll do after. We still have certified staff to get through yet on this one, and then we'll do the addendum at the end.
I'll motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll second, Jen first. Recommend issuing a continuing contract to Christine Schock as secretary. I am not going to say anything.
Doing above note, right?
Yeah. I would not know the value of my life. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Abstain. Motion passes four-zero with one abstention. And I need another motion from Melissa Crawford.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And Galen. To recommend issuing a three-year administrative contract to Melissa Crawford as food service director beginning August first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. And here is our addendum for the certified staff.
For the classified.
For classified, I'm sorry. For classified staff, it starts here, and then it goes here. So the classified.
It's just the one here, just that one.
Just the one, yeah. The one extra one, right?
Mm-hmm. Just that one.
Yep, okay. So recommend issuing a supplemental contract to Alex Roost. That would still be under the same one, right? I don't have to do another one since it doesn't have another line here.
Aren't we going to change his, ready?
Yeah, because that's what this is. It says seven fifty instead of the ten forty. That's what the other one is. That's right. I'm on the wrong.
There you go.
There we go. We have four different papers flying around here.
So would we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do. So, thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion for Alex? It is recommend issuing a supplemental contract to Alex Roost at the minimum wage rate of ten forty-five per hour for technology assistance in twenty-twenty-four.
Same reason as the other one.
Same reason as the other. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. All right. We got all the addendums, I believe, now, right?
Yes.
Yep.
And then services and agreements, I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
Second.
Thank you, Galen. Recommend to approve a social media management contract between Promote419 and Hicksville Exempt Village Schools. The contractor shall be responsible for scheduling and posting content to Hicksville Exempt Village School's social media channels. This contract will begin July first, twenty-twenty-four, and end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. To recommend to approve a mentor program service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And recommend to approve a Medicaid School Program Service Agreement with Healthcare Process Consulting, Inc., otherwise known as HPC. This contract will begin July first, twenty-twenty-four, and end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Discussion?
I'll just mention a little bit on the Medicaid School Program. Um, HPC consulting firm that has helped us in the past. We have providers, or in other words, people within our district and through the ESC, speech, psychologist, different types of services like that in which they can submit for their services provided to students. It goes through HPC. Students are eligible for it. We get reimbursement back. So, um, to date, we've got about $70,000 back this year. So, um, and we'll have more forthcoming. But anyways, it is definitely beneficial for us to continue to bring on the consultant to be able to maximize our revenue in this, in this area.
Other? Conversation? Okay. Roll call please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. And moving on to other business, a motion, please.
I'll move.
All right. Tyler and Jen? Recommend to approve notice that Hicksville Exempt Village Schools will offer a public meeting to provide the opportunity for public comment on the district's use of the IDEA or IDEA Part View funds with recommendations or suggestions for special education programs and services. Liz Parnas, school psychologist, and Angie Smith, assistant principal, will be available for this meeting on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 3:00 at the Hicksville Elementary School in the elementary office conference room, or by appointment at a later time. Angie, do you want to say anything about this, or?
Um, this is basically to go over just how... You know, an informative meeting to let parents know the IEP process, how we go about even our MTSS, which is our... Starts in elementary school and all of the interventions students receive into, um, you know, if a 504 plan's needed or an IEP is needed, the testing processes. So it's just, it's, it's number one to give parents as much information as we can about the process and their rights. And also, um, even once there's... If their student is identified with a disability and needs an IEP or a 504 plan, what are their rights? How can they advocate for their student as well? Why is it important for them to be at the conferences and be there as part of the meeting as well? So it's just kind of, um, part of just making sure that we are communicating and we're coming together with the community on what services are provided here at Hicksville.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Um, I need another motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Galen and Eric. Recommend the purchase of one 84-passenger bus from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service, Inc. through the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative at a cost of $139,578.
How far out is delivering?
A couple months. That's why we jumped on it. They actually had one left over, and no one had spoke for it, and it was identical to the one we have coming in. So we took advantage of it. Otherwise, we probably had to wait another year. So that's the reason why we put it on for now.
Eric, is this being added or not? Because this is a price on the agenda.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't want that on there, but unless it's already on there.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So, okay. That was an option. I'm sure.
Remind me tomorrow. I'll call Austin.
Okay.
Are we all ready for that new bus?
Do we... Is there an old bus that goes in on trade-in, or is this additional?
There is one, Eric. Uh, we checked on the trade-in price, and now we're gonna see, Eric and John are gonna see about potentially uh, doing it through Gov auction-type things. See if they can get a little bit more money that way. It's not very much, unfortunately, but you could see daylight through the steps. So it didn't... It wasn't gonna pass inspection, so we had to... We can't even use it now, so.
Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to old business. Um, discussion? Do you want to discuss some of what Eric had said?
I don't know. If you have any questions on any of that?
Yeah, I don't... If you all saw Eric's email, if you have any questions about... And some of the things have been addressed already, so I think we're...
I think we're good other than the cords conversation, but I think that'll be in the next section.
That'll be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so then we are unannounced guests wishing to address the board. Okay. Liv, is that you?
Me.
All right.
I got my hair dyed. I look great. It's all blonde now.
It's all good.
Hi. My name's Olivia Joyner. I think you must know you guys. Um, I'm a senior at Four County in Hicksville, I guess. Um, so I don't really know.
You can just tell us what you want to say, Liv, just what this is about, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
I guess I want to get a griddle to wear my FFA cords at graduation and see if that's a goal. And if not, then that works.
Tell me again, what, what cords?
Um, they're for the FFA organization at Four County.
FFA?
Yep. It's Future Farmers, or it used to be Future Farmers of America. It's just FFA now, though. So.
And they're given to you by Four County schools?
Yes, so, um, because Hicksville does not have FFA, I had to earn both my green hand and my chapter degree, which made me have to, um... I can pull it up, but I had to learn the creed. I had to learn the history of the FFA. I had to learn the motto, the colors, and what the colors represent, the emblem. I had to learn all the different, um, things that every other chapter has to do to earn those two degrees. I had to present it in front of the entire FFA chapter at Four County during National FFA Week. And then I was awarded both those pins for my FFA jacket and my cords to, to wear at graduation. Um, they're... I guess they're just regular, I guess, graduation cords. They're just blue and gold. They're, it's one, they're knotted, or they're strung together, so. I don't know what else to say. It's okay. Mama will take over about that.
Thank you, guys, for everything. Um, my name is Crystal Joyner. My daughter here, Olivia, is a senior here at Hicksville Schools and also Four County. Um, I want to express my deepest upset and frustration at the point that she has been denied by Mr. Highlander and Mr. Countryman. And I understand the reasoning behind it, but I still wanted to come forward um, to wear her FFA cords. Olivia has been a student at HHS since third grade, and she has proudly been an ace all these years. She has shown an intense love of farming, animal science, and agriculture since she was a small child, and wanted nothing more than to be part of FFA when she grew up. Since Hicksville does not offer this program within the school building, and to be noted, we are one of the only districts and all the surrounding districts that does not offer FFA or FCC LA, which used to be Future Homemakers of America. Um, since Hicksville does not offer these programs within the school building, we started to look outside of the school building. We thought about withdrawing her from Hicksville and enrolling her in one of the many districts that have FFA as her goal was to have the blue and gold jacket and everything that goes along with that, including all the scholarship opportunities and, um, other advancements and networking that she's able to have within the field of ag. She did not want to leave Hicksville Schools, so we chose to keep her here. And when, her sophomore year, she came home after the Four County Career Exploration Day and said, "Mom, Four County has FFA. I don't want to leave, but I need to go." And I said, "Okay. If that's what you want to do, then that's what we're going to do." It was not an easy decision for this young lady. It wasn't an easy decision for me, as I have three children in this school, and unfortunately, all three of them have chosen to go to Four County because there's programs that Hicksville does not offer. During her time at Four County, she has won a multitude of awards, including third in the state for dog grooming, interviewing, and livestock judging. She's also been awarded several degrees that only a very few students are able to get in a short time of being an FFA. Most kids have four years plus to get all of the degrees that she has managed to get in two. Um, it is also to be known, and Hicksville should be very proud, that she is the first female student from Hicksville to ever hold the presidential election spot, which she won out and every other kid at Four County to win the FFA president spot. She was recently awarded her FFA graduation cords, as well as what she had told you guys that she had done. And I had reached out to both the administration staff, asked for permission for her to wear those, as she did earn them, and it was denied both times. I'm just asking the board to understand that FFA is a school organization. It is not an external organization. Unfortunately, Hicksville's unable to offer that program, or does not for whatever reason. I know at one point in time Hicksville did. I think it disbanded back in the 60s and has never came back to.
The 80s.
The 80s. Was it the 80s? Okay, sorry. That was long before me, so. I know. I know, Krista. Trust me, I know. So, um, but I do want to say, she's earned her cords and her jacket and her degrees the same way that our athletes earn their varsity letters, and they proudly get to display those. She doesn't get to display that, and this is her time to be able to be recognized by her peers, her teachers, and our administration staff, that she has worked so hard to be able to do that. Not only for her, but for other FFA kids that come from Hicksville should be able to be recognized by everyone that they have earned these very high honors that are very few get to. So, thank you for your time. And if you have additional information and need additional, I also brought the requirements that came off the FFA website, as well as the clubs that Four County offers that Hicksville does not. Thank you.
So I have a question?
Yes.
So did she earn... Were the cords because she participated or because she earned?
Because you have to have your, uh, chapter degree during your FFA.
So you earned them. It's not just participation?
Correct. So, as far as I'm aware, I'm the only kid at Four County that actually earned them this year, because nobody else wanted to do the presentation to earn them. And if they didn't do it at Four County and their homeschool had FFA, they usually have their, uh, award ceremony there that they get handed their cords at. Um, our award ceremony at, uh, Four County for all the clubs is on May 15th. So.
And it's my understanding that you don't wear a gown or anything at that?
I do not believe so, because our, uh, Mr. Bachman at Four County, he told us, um, on our senior meeting day that the dress code for the Four County Career Center walkthrough, I don't... The ceremony was just a nice dress, and then for boys, slacks and a collared shirt, so.
What's the, what's the school's reasoning for not wanting to wear the cords?
Yeah, so I can explain our policy. Um, it's been a policy for, my guess would be, um, a couple decades when I look back to the previous administration. And, you know, we continue to provide the same dress code manual packet to the students that they have for several years. So, um, we allow three different things to be worn at our Hicksville ceremony. Those would be NHS recognition, honors cords, and then military cords. Um, then, of course, you have Val and Sal medallions that they wear. But, um, those would be the only things that we permit to be worn. We don't have cords or allow cords to be worn from any other student organization. So, next year, we will have FFA at, at Hicksville, because this was our first year as the ag program. I know I've explained that to you guys. As we phase things in, like Phase Two is starting that student organization, which is a requirement of the career tech program. So that goes into effect next year, working with Mr. Farrell, on how exactly we will implement that and phase that in. But, um, FFA will become an organization here at Hicksville next year. But then that would fall in line with our other organizations here at school, other clubs. Um, you know, you think about Foreign Language Club, um, Academic Team, things like that. They don't have cords. We don't permit them to wear anything for those organizations. Um, our policy is NHS, honors cords, and then military cords, and then the Val and Sal medals. So I wanted to add a couple other things to hopefully clarify the why as to why we are, um, why we adhere to that. Cords that are issued by Four County Career Center are worn at Four County Career Center's Senior Recognition Day, which is like their graduation day. Those cords can and do conflict with the colors of the cords that we issue here at Hicksville. Um, I want to give you one example. We have students on the Drug Free Council at Four County, and they get cords for that club. Some schools do allow cords from Earned Anywhere to be worn at their ceremony. Again, we don't, but, uh, those cords for the Drug Free Council are red, white, and blue. Here at Hicksville, red, white, and blue symbols, military enlistment. So, right there, that's an example of a clash to where they don't mean the same thing. So, um, cords issued at Four County, I guess, don't necessarily symbolize the same thing at our ceremony. I look back, and last year, we had a student that graduated from Four County involved in many different clubs, and she actually had six different cords on at the Four County Recognition Day. Um, it was a lot, all different colors. So, at that point, I think when you open it up, and this is, this is my opinion, and I believe I'm speaking for why the policy was put in place, it opens it up to just any color, anything being worn, and then not really being able to decide what it means for Hicksville and our ceremony specifically. So, I think I hit all the reasons as to why. I would say the biggest thing is, you know, Hicksville... For Hicksville ceremony, Hicksville Schools issues what that cord represents, issues that recognition. When you open it up to other, um, other clubs, organizations, student involvement items, that quickly becomes clouded, becomes muddied, and we're not really able to clearly distinguish what it is that we here at our ceremony were wishing to recognize in the first place. If the policy were to change, I would say you'd have to open it up to all. You couldn't just pick one, um, which then would mean that any, any club, any student organization, um, would be able to issue cords. You wouldn't want to then distinguish this one, not this one. So right now, it's no, um, student organizations. The, the cords that are worn at Hicksville are directly related to academics and military. So that's our policy.
I understand your point, and I can see where there is a difference between participation, which can be very wide and broad, and specific earning of like, an achievement of great standard. And I think specifically of my son, who earned Eagle Scout along with five other boys, who were honored at their graduation ceremony. Again, it wasn't for every Boy Scout, but they earned a significant achievement. And that's what I... I think there has to be some kind of like designation that we are honoring significant achievement versus just across-the-board participation.
So will they have, when we do have FFA here, will they have cords?
Uh, according to our policy, no, they would not, because that's an organization.
I agree with Jen as far as an honor or an earned cord makes a lot more sense than a participation cord, because you have students who are in everything. They might not be above and beyond in any of those, uh, clubs, but obviously, someone like Olivia, who's earned a spot, is one of how many people out of how many schools that they got to do it. I, I agree with you, Jen.
And I... It's a special honor. It's not as if it were, again, participation. It's something that she worked for, and that she achieved. I mean, we allow students from Four County to be in our top 10%, even though they're in two different academic worlds. Then I don't see a clear delineation between the work that Olivia has done and, and has, you know, it's the Hicksville way, isn't it? To do the best that you can and be recognized for being the best that you are, and to be the only one to do that, that's, that is a big difference. Now, how many kids at Four County belong to FFA? Oh, heck, there are a lot of them. How many of them have those cords? One, and she's a Hicksville kid. So to me, that's an exception, and that's an exemption, but that's my personal opinion.
I would agree. The only thing that concerns me is anything that would clash with military honors. That one, I don't like the idea of there being confusion there.
So, FFA, the national organization of FFA, has three different cord colors. So, FFA, the national organization of FFA, has three different cord colors. Mine specifically are a base of blue with gold intertwined in it. So it's one singular cold, oh my gosh, cord, blue, gold is intertwined, and I think there's two, I think there's two, there's at least one medal at the bottom, but it's about this big round.
So my thought would be, it's different than the others. It's not gonna interfere, and we're gonna have FFA next year, and that's not gonna be a participation thing, so there won't be any cords, but this isn't a participation thing. So, my feeling would be just to allow her to wear, that's my personal opinion, is to allow her to wear the cords. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, the litmus test to all this policy should be the achievement. If you've achieved something, then maybe it's worth taking a look. And I think in a way, you know, Aaron addressed that too, because he said academics and academic achievement needs to be awarded, of course, but other achievements are also awarded, so.
And I agree with all that achievement and everything, but graduation day, to me, is about the student, their achievements, and their families, and although I do believe it needs to be an honor-based cord or that, some earned achievement, the only people who care about that graduate walking out is gonna be their, their family there, who's gonna see that, and it's gonna mean a lot. And it might, the colors might clash.
And I come from a military family, and I think a lot of people are accepted into the military in a school, but again, there's just one, this, this.
Okay.
I love, I love my family members, and I am very proud to be a part of a military family, but I would say that that's an honor that we're giving them as a special honor, and I think that what she's doing is also a special honor.
And as long as it doesn't clash, I agree with you, Eric. As long as it doesn't clash with the military cords, I, that's the only, only issue I could see.
That's red, white, and blue, isn't it?
Yeah.
And so in general, what I'm hearing from the board is that we think because it's an achievement, and it was earned, that I think most of us would agree that it would be okay for her to wear those, those cords, and I think as FFA holds here in Hicksville, this would be a non-issue, because we'll have FFA back here.
Well, I think we need to adjust the policy, so that way, there is some leeway for significant achievement, you know, that a student with significant achievement, that, you know, that our principal and admin can allow that type of thing to be recognized. Like, I understand the policy and the way it's written, but I think we do need to change it and modify it, so that way we can...
Agreed.
And teachers and students always have to be flexible, so I estimate sometimes the administration also needs to be, you know, needs to be a little bit of bend, which always happens. There's always some give and take, so.
Yeah, I would just say I would want the policy to be rewritten, and I don't know the exact verbiage, to be quite honest, to use, because I think what will come into question is what is earned and what is...
And what is exemplary?
I'm thinking of the Drug Free Council. It's a handful of students. I believe we have two on there from Hicksville this year. You know, if they're chosen by their peers, that type of thing. So, I, we will have, we will have a mix of red, white, and blue this year, depending on how we, we word that, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to then put us in the exact situation again of where one student feels left out, and then we're back at square one again, so.
You could change the policy to reflect just the programs we have, and even though we don't have an FFA program here this year, I'm hearing you wanna make an exception, but since we're gonna have that program next year, we could add FFA, because we will have that program, but, you know, four county has a dress code, too. They don't allow caps and gowns, so, you know, everybody has their own.
Right.
Little thing.
I just think it's, it's a big day for students, and she's a Hicksville girl. She's my neighbor. I mean, she's proud of being a Hicksville girl, so I think we should, I think we should...
If it helps, I have the national guidelines, just to even start to get your cords. Students have to have a GPA of three point five or greater. They have to have a minimum of two years in FFA. They've had to achieve their green hand and chapter degrees. They've had to participate in a minimum of two FFA service projects during that timeframe, and they've had to participate in the following during your time of FFA. Chapter, district, area, officer, leadership, development event, career development or event, or shown in a livestock or agriculture or ag mechanics project. And Olivia here was honored to be able to, she was sent to Oklahoma City to show in Cattleman's Congress, because she has shown so well with her cattle throughout, throughout winter. So she has been able to achieve all of that in a two-year timeframe, so.
Well, that's a lot of work, too.
And I'm...
A lot of toe-stpped on, huh?
I'm gonna speak up here, I'm grandma. I have to say that my granddaughter has learned above and beyond probably more students than I could ever imagine with the agricultural world. She has put eleven years into four H. She has shown for different families, different, has traveled showing, she has, and keeps a great, great average. I mean, all-around great kid. I'm, we are extremely proud of her every day. I mean, she's always got something showing up at four county, or four H, or the FFA, going, you know, to Indianapolis, and she's just, it's very well-deserved, and she has worked very hard, very hard. It's not just a, you know, something that is just given, it's worked, and very well-deserved for her, so we're very proud of her. And I hope that you all can understand and, and see what you have, because Hicksville helped her. So, you know, this is something for Hicksville to be proud of, and she is planning to continue with the ag world. So, I just had to speak up as grandma. And thank you.
I definitely wouldn't have gotten second in a job interview in the district if it wasn't for Hicksville. I think it's a good statement, because I only take first place for that, but...
Any other?
So is the decision then to, to allow her to wear for this, for graduation this year, and then relook at the board policy and see how we can modify that, so we don't hopefully avoid this situation in the future?
Needs to remain strict, in my, in my opinion, needs to remain strict, but... Yeah, and I know that, that Aaron is absolutely right. Mr. Heinberger is absolutely right, because you have to think about the, the words that we need to put into this, which some really, it has to be strong, and it has to be very clear, because it's clear now, and I think... To Keith's point, FFA will make it clearer. Yes.
I agree with you.
Any other?
Just really quick, I, I think...
Number one, congratulations. That's a great, great thing.
I just, if we do have, if we do change that policy, I just, I, I strong, like, I just very concerned with if we have any gray area with it. So, like you said, those words would have to be like ironclad, because, you know, any gray in a policy creates a bunch of problems, so I...
If it was specific to that?
Yeah, if it was specific, it's just, we have to be, you know, be careful with programs, even if we have them in school, like, if we, we have, you know, the DARE program and all those things, too. So if we're saying it's an in-school program, well, that could be a lot. So it would just have to be really ironclad, and no gray, or else we're...
And not really a participation award.
Mm-hmm, yeah, like you said, it has to be a... Exceptional. Exceptional achievement.
Good policy's not easy.
No.
So...
It's hard.
It's work.
Bad policy has consequences.
Yes.
And I'm more than willing to help with my board skills, if needed. I have some. Just obfuscate the whole issue, and then nobody will know what you're talking about. So are we, it sounds to me like all five of the board members are okay with this exception being made this year?
Right.
With this year being... Yeah? Yeah? All five?
Yeah.
And then, do you guys wish to see a policy updated after graduation, or...
Yeah, I think so, that's one, that's one...
Lush, do you have some spare time?
Yeah, I know. There's nothing going on, as we said earlier, in the next month and a half.
Yeah, you've got so little to worry about, right?
Yes. And I, as I said, Aaron, you, I'll likely help if you need.
All right. Thanks, Liv, congratulations. That's pretty cool. All right, that being said, there is no need to go into executive session unless something has changed, and our next meeting will be, well, I need a motion for adjournment, and then I can tell you, but our next meeting will be on May twentieth. All right, we got a Galen, and we got Jen. And Monday, May twentieth, at five thirty, are there any issues with it being at that time and that day? Hey, so close, so close to the end of this meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Ruin.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Le, Mr. Levy?
Yes.
So hard.
Understand.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. These four-letter words you have problems with, I know, Mr. Ruin.
Some of them, yeah.
Mike ruined. Meeting's adjourned, thank you all.